All right, so we are calling this meeting to order. We will pay attention to Councilwoman Ortiz for the invocation to be followed by the Fledge of Allegiance. Please rise if you're ready.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to reflect on, all of us to reflect on our veterans, those that have served, those that are serving. I think it's very, very important with tomorrow being Veterans Day that we show our veterans that we appreciate them and we love them. Because these are trying times for them, not only us, but they're trying times for us. So, all of the men on the council that have served, I want to say personally, thank you for your service. And you still are serving the public, and I respect that, and I highly, I highly look up to you. So, thank you again for your service. If I don't ever, if I never forget to say that, I want to say that now. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we just come to you, Lord. We thank you, we thank you for these trying times, Lord, because it only makes us stronger, it only makes us help more one another, it only makes us love one another deeply, it only makes us look at ourselves, Lord. Oh, Heavenly Father, we ask that you touch our city. We ask that you touch all of the first responders, go into the hospitals, Lord, and touch those people that are in the hospitals, Lord. We ask that you touch our nation from the top to the bottom. We ask that you keep every home safe, Lord. Oh, Heavenly Father, we just ask that you just touch their hearts, that they will be willing to wear masks, not for themselves, but for somebody else. Lord, we ask that you rebuke all hatred out of the city. We ask that you help us to come together for your name, so that we will have the city that you will be proud of, Lord, and that we can continue to grow as a city. We thank you, Lord, we thank you for the small things, we thank you for the small issues that we have, that we don't have some of the bigger city issues, and, Lord, we thank you for that. We thank you for all the hard work that everybody is doing. And, Lord, we just ask that you continue to put your head of protection around us and keep us safe, in Jesus' name I pray, amen.
All allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of the stands, for which the nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and honor. All right, so we have a few presentations at this time. Actually, no, before that, we go into the roll call.
Mayor DeLa Isla?
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Here.
Valdivia Akala?
Here.
Ortiz?
Here.
Emerson?
Here.
Padilla?
Here.
Nager?
Here.
Dobler?
Here.
Duncan?
Here.
And Lesser?
Here.
We have Tim present.
Okay, Tim being present, we now keep on moving on to some presentations that we have. I will start by asking the city, Jessica Laimandola, to talk to us a little bit about one of the awards, the Tom McGahey Service Award. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I believe there's someone from the fire office have the, yes, come on forward, if you would, please. Taylor, is there a microphone in that?
Yes.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name's Doug Jordison, I'm the State Fire Marshal for Kansas, and I want to thank the mayor and council for inviting me here this evening to present an award. This award is the Tom McGoy Award. It's an award that our office, the State Fire Chiefs Association, and the State Firefighters Association presents every year to a firefighter for their heroic actions above and beyond the call of duty. It's based on the fire chief in Wichita, Kansas, Fire Chief Tom McGoy, and three other firefighters that lost their lives in a large fire in Wichita in 1968. And every year since, our group with the chiefs and the firefighters association have given out this award. We accept nominations, and then we pick a very deserving person, individual, or team, or department to present this award to. After careful consideration and input from the three groups, we've selected Lieutenant Matthew Free from the Topeka Fire Department for the Tom McGoy, excuse me, Fire Service Award for his actions involving a house fire in Topeka on August 4th of 2020, and I think the chief would like to say a few words now.
Thank you, thank you, Doug. Thank you for being here tonight to give this presentation to Lieutenant Free. This achievement that went on that day, I happened to stop by the fire scene after it had taken place, and they had extinguished the fire, and the professionalism and the teamwork that the Topeka Fire Department showed that day was amazing to me and to anybody standing around there. The accolades that were coming from the neighbors about the work that they had done in saving that child and removing him out of that burning structure was beyond me after reviewing, especially after reviewing the actual fire itself. I was just amazed by the work that was done and how that child was brought to safety by Lieutenant Free and the rest of his crew, who then they were transported to the hospital, and the child did survive after about six days in the hospital. And I am so, I am so proud of the Topeka Fire Department and for everything that they do on a daily basis without looking for the recognition that they totally deserve. Thank you.
I would like to also echo in the pride that we have in our public servants, and especially our police and our firefighters. Just thank you so much for putting your life in danger to ensure that other people are able to continue being among us. So, we significantly appreciate you and congratulations on being recognized.
All right. If you want to show that, I guess there's a short video that they wanted to show too, but while they're bringing that up, I just want to congratulate Lieutenant Matthew Free and the Topeka Fire Department for being the recipients of this year's Tom McGoy. I have a certificate for Lieutenant Free. Just all hand to hand, no hand shaking. And then we have a representative from the Topeka Fire, also have one for them.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
We now proceed with the 2020 Census presentation. Councilwoman Padilla?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make an extra comment, if I may, on the award that we just presented.
Oh, absolutely, please.
I just think it's important to highlight the fact that our department is exemplary in every way, and it shows how training and commitment to the service can result in this type of high-quality individuals working for our first responder services. And so, again, I'd just like to add my thanks and congratulations to the agency for what it has been doing for our community and continues to do on a daily basis. So, I just wanted to say that before I move into the census, if that's okay. As you all know, you probably are tired of hearing about the 2020 Census. It is, for practical purposes, completed, and it was an endeavor that was complicated because of timing, because of the pandemic, changes in dates, and so forth, but I am pleased to tell you that this city, again, has a way of bringing together a coalition of people who want to serve this community in a variety of ways, and coming from very different professions and fields, but have the common goal of bringing resources to the city of Topeka. And so, it's important that we take the time to reflect on those people who step forward in organizations, who step forward to help our city get out, get out and talk to the people about the census. It was a difficult task, but it was, they were undaunted by those challenges, and the outreach to the community was exemplary. You know, numbers don't always tell the story, even though we fell short of our goal, I still think that the opportunity to talk to the community about what the census can bring to our community was important, and I think it was a good idea to have different voices sending that message to the community and not just one, one group. And I think in the beginning, that was our goal, and I think our goal was reached in that sense. So, if you'll allow me, we have present in the, in the council chambers, some representatives that I'd like to present an award in a way of appreciation for their work with me and the rest of the committee on the census. And then there are those who could not make it for one reason or other, but certainly deserve a name recognition. We have awards and recognition for them as well. The mayor's office, I think Trey Hykes is handling getting those out at a different time when it's more convenient for everyone. For today, I think we'd like to bring forward Mike Foster with the Topeka Rescue Mission, Debbie Stanton with the Pecahoula County Public Library, and Dr. Joseph De Soto, Washburn University. And joining us via Zoom is Carlos Diaz. He was one of the staffers for the 2020 Census, and he was invaluable in giving ideas, giving direction. You know, it's hard to communicate the same message to a variety of people and make it understood, and Carlos did a great job pointing out those things that people would pay attention to when we're giving the message about the importance of the census. And so, personally, I'd like to thank you three who are here and the three that are helping. I know we can't shake hands, but I do want to tell you how much I do appreciate your outreach into the community. Obviously, you get a community piece that sometimes is overlooked and difficult to count. Dr. De Soto, of course, the Western University has always been a partner with the city, and the student population is important for us here in Topeka, so I really appreciate your business. And of course, the library goes without speaking, that's the hub of the city. And without having, and without having it available like it ordinarily would have been open to the public, I still think you did an exemplary job in getting the word out. And so, my thanks to you, and I really appreciate, appreciate everything that you did. Thank you.
And as Councilwoman Padilla is getting together with some of the members of our census team, I want to also make sure that we recognize the fact that Councilwoman Padilla selflessly was the chair of our complete Census Count Committee. Councilwoman Padilla, our community is indebted to your leadership, to your hard work, and I just want to make sure that all of us commend you for your labor, not only you, but all of the individuals that were recognized this evening. Thank you so much for all of your help.
Thank you, Mayor. Before Carlos gets off video, if he doesn't, he doesn't leave, I wish that Dorothy and, gosh, I can't remember, I'm having a lapse there, who are the partner was with us from the Census Bureau, Melinda. Yeah, Dorothy and Melinda and yourselves, again, like I said, having you available to our community was extremely important. So, thank you again, Carlos, for helping us out. And if I can, Mayor, I think it's only appropriate that, at least I read off some of the names of the committee group, so that even though they're not here, they know that we've recognized their effort, if I may.
Absolutely.
Okay. Annie Oak Church, El Centro of Topeka, the Greater Topeka Partnership, KSNT TV, Kansas University of Topeka at St. Francis Hospital, League of Women Voters, Safe Streets, the Salvation Army, Stormont Vale, the Topeka Capital Journal, Topeka Center for Peace and Justice, the Topeka Housing Authority, USD 501, Vallejo, WIBW, and I have to mention the City of Topeka staff. Monique Claudio and Trey Hykes were extremely important in getting everything organized. Those two, you get them together, and I think they could probably take care of the Pope Quincy viaduct in the weekend, because those, they have a lot of energy, and they work very, very hard. So, I want to thank those city staffers and Molly Holden for putting together the PSAs that were, were very well done, and were aired on TV. I think that made a big difference. So, I want to thank everybody at the city and the city manager for giving me the staff to help with that census. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, our team and our community for coming together to ensure. Carlos, thank you so much as well. Appreciate the, I mean, it really was a full-on effort. And again, I cannot say enough about Mike Padilla. He doesn't like to be recognized, but Mike is a leader through and through in this undertaking, which required for him to be able to communicate with everybody across our community, keep people engaged, engage other community partners. It was, it was wonderful, Mike. Thank you so much for your leadership. The only thing I'll say before we go back to the consent agenda is to Liz, I love the fact that you come to work with your babies, because you are demonstrating what a working parent does. Do not feel bad, because the baby had a moment there being upset. You didn't see us, most of us were laughing and smiling, because we get it. You're a mom, and we love you, and we support you being a mom, and we support the fact that you are here this evening with your child working with us. We now move on to the consent agenda. If the clerk would read.
Item 3A for the minutes of the regular meeting of October 20th, 2020, and there are no applications.
You have heard the consent agenda, what is the pleasure of the body? Thank you, please. Councilwoman Nager moves to approve. Do we have a second? Councilwoman Ortiz, seconds. Questions or comments on the consent agenda? Seeing none, we proceed by voting.
Mayor De La Isla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
Yes.
That is 10 yeses.
And having voted yes, the motion carries. Now, we move on to the action items. Action item A, if the clerk would read.
Item 4A is a resolution introduced by the members of the Public Infrastructure Committee comprised of councilmembers Neil Dobler, Tony Emerson, Mike Lesser, and Mike Padilla, recommending approval of certain public infrastructure projects.
Here, take it away.
Is that me, Mayor?
I guess so.
Okay. Thank you. This should go fairly quickly. We had some, some great discussion with city staff, the four of us, and occasionally we had another councilperson attend. Had an opportunity to hear about the projects coming up in the next, next few months per the resolution that was passed with the CIP. Those are city sales tax projects over 250,000, as well as street maintenance, list of street maintenance projects. I guess I'd let the other members of the committee speak for themselves, but I think I came away with a, a good, a good feeling about the amount of, of technical know-how that goes into selection of those projects. It is, it's a difficult task when we have so many needs across the community to try to balance those with decisions that, that make sense. And I guess I have to commend city engineer Brian Faust and his staff for leading us through the process. We had a lot of questions. They seemed to have a lot of, seemed to have them covered and had good answers. So, when, when the time is right, I will make a motion to approve this resolution, but I guess first I'd ask maybe Deputy Mayor Emerson and, and Mr. Padilla and Mr. Lesser to give us their thoughts as well. Thank you.
Any other members would like to make some remarks? Yes, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Not really anything different than what Councilmember Dobler said. It was a, I think when we started this, this was a way to hopefully get us all more engaged with what is happening on a yearly basis, because when we approve the CIP and then the CIBs, sometimes hard to lose, it's easy, excuse me, to lose track of what's actually happening. So, it's a great way to see the process that city staff is using, as well as to see what current projects are, are up to bat now. So, it's a great process. Thank you.
Well, just briefly, I want to commend the other three members of that committee, because they carried the heavy load. Those three individuals added a level of expertise and experience that I think really made all the difference. When I was able to participate, I learned quickly that just to listen to them and listen to their advice, because they really asked some good questions, and I learned a lot just by sitting with them. So, I appreciate being able to sit on the committee when I could.
Last, but certainly not least, Councilman Lesser.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have much else to add, other than, I think it was a very worthwhile process. It was great to have the expertise of Neil and Tony on that, who do those type of projects on a daily basis, as, as, as Councilman Padilla said, and then it was, it was great to be able to visit with staff in a little more detail and, and have an explanation of the thought process that went into why certain projects and the timing and all those different things. It was definitely a very good experience. So, and thank you to the Chair, Mr. Dobler, for, for leading it so diligently, and that's all I got.
Next, Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. I butted into this meeting, and I want to say it was a good but. Neil, I want to thank you for putting this committee together. I followed it and came to one of your meetings, and it was very, very informative. And I've been on here a long while, but I agree, there was a lot of good questions answered, that need, questions asked that needed to be asked. I'm tickled to death about Deer Creek Traffic Way, but again, I want to say thank you to all your, to your team for putting that together. I think it's very beneficial, and I think it'll be very beneficial for all of us to go back and watch YouTube if you don't, the meetings if you don't understand some of the street process, because there is some new things that got to me. So, again, job.
Additional comments or questions for the body? And so, Councilwoman Dobler, you said that you wanted to introduce this as a motion? Oh, sorry, Councilwoman Hiller, pardon me.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to comment that I too was impressed at the work that was done and the resolution. I did have some questions, though, and I think the questions that I had were ones that I think we all shared at the time that we decided we should have this interim review. So, I went ahead and sent them in advance to Brian Faust, and the questions were, well, so what about the curb and gutter list, and how long is the list, and how long will the money last at, at the rate that we've been budgeting it? And then I wanted to know the same about the alleys, how, how many alleys were on the list, and how did they get chosen, and also with the, how we were doing with the ADA sidewalk ramps. And what he sent me, he, he sent me this morning these wonderful handouts that had all the answers to those questions, and they were a wonderful update to where we are. It turned out that those were handed out at the meeting, and so I would encourage that in the future, and we, we wanted this as sort of an interim of brush-up, so that we stay current as well. I would encourage for, for these meetings, but also others, actually, that if there are handouts, that those get included in the minutes. It was wonderful to see that they were already ahead of every question I had, and they're easy to read, they're short, but very clear. So, thank you for the, for the work that you did in advance for the committee, Engineer Faust, and then thanks for getting it out to me. Thank you.
Yes, Councilwoman Dobler?
Oh, city manager wanted to speak.
Oh, I, I, sorry, these new glasses, I'm having trouble with them.
We're also seeing the benefits of this committee and the issues that are being brought forward. We saw it all along, additional guidance in some of these areas, and having the ability to get together as a committee and talk through some of these issues is being beneficial for us as well. So, I just wanted to throw that in. We're finding that we're getting the feedback that we need as we progress with regards to determining priorities and how we handle different infrastructure projects and categories, and figuring out the right priorities to address them. So, I think it's working from us, from our standpoint as well.
Councilwoman Dobler?
Thank you, Mayor. Quickly, I just want to reiterate, this, this really wasn't a case of the city council telling staff how to do their job. It is, it's really a good exercise in communication. We, we learned a lot. It gave everybody an opportunity to, to talk about the process. So, it, it was a great process, and, and we're fortunate to have, and I'm sorry, I didn't recognize others on the, in the public work staff. We had good presentations from, about pavement management and a lot of other issues that hopefully we'll be able to continue in the future. And as Councilwoman Ortiz said, you have the ability to catch up on some of those on YouTube and, and really learn about some of the in-depth city processes. So, with all that in mind, I will make a motion to approve the resolution.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Hiller, seconds. Comments or questions? There's no public comment this evening, and nobody signed up to speak at this point in time. If there's no questions or comments, we proceed by the vote.
Mayor De La Isla? Mayor DeLaEsla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Heller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Neger?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
Yes.
We have 10 yeses.
10 having voted yes, the motion carries. At this time, we move on to the next item. Item B, if the clerk would read.
Item B is a resolution introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, setting the public hearing to consider the advisability of establishing a community improvement district CID for the downtown Ramada Hotel and Convention Center pursuant to KSA 12-6A26.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The City of Topeka has had a petition for a community improvement district filed with us. In addition, we've also had the application filed with the city. It would be to improve the downtown Ramada Hotel and Convention Center. It would make certain improvements and establish a 2% CID. Tonight, what we're doing is very simple, in that we're setting a hearing date for December 1 to have further consideration and presentation by them, and also opportunity for governing body to ask questions at that time. So ask your approval to set that hearing date to December 1.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Second by Councilman Lesser. Comments or questions?
Comment.
Councilwoman Heller?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, just a point of order, not to stop anything necessarily, but typically when we get a proposal like this, our policy and our procedures require that the finances have been looked over by staff and that they are offered to the council to review. I know this is a simple one, but that is in the procedures. Further, the procedures and the policy state that we should have a development agreement draft before we even set a public hearing. We do not have that yet. I would like to ask the city manager when he thinks that's coming, because I think absolutely if, if the thought is to expedite this one, that we have a completed development agreement at least 10 days in advance of whatever date we set for that public hearing, so that we're at least somewhat on track with our statutory timeline.
Councilwoman, I've reviewed the policy and the, both the policy and the procedures, and it does not state that it has to be done at the time that we set the hearing date. And I've asked the city attorney to review that information, and that's not accurate. But nevertheless, we are working with the developer. Staff has already reviewed the financials regarding this situation, has had multiple discussions with the developer. We feel confident that the financials work with regards to this proposal. Secondly, we are expecting to receive back the development agreement prior to November 18th, which would be within the 10 days. So we understand your concerns and desire to have that, and we're working through the final details of that. So we're working hard to get it to you as soon as we can.
And I say that, I don't, I don't want to jump on anybody, but we've gotten ourselves caught with getting ahead of ourselves in the past by not having those agreements ready in a timely manner, and then finding somehow even have it, either having to postpone or a real short timeline. And I wanted to speak up, just so we don't have that happen for us, and I get it.
Yep. We'll give it to you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, and I think we have a second. Additional comments or questions? Seeing none, we proceed with the vote.
Mayor DeLaEsla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Heller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Neger?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
Yes.
We have 10 yeses.
10 having voted yes, the motion carries. We now move on to the non-action item, if the clerk would read.
Item 5A is discussion regarding the details of the future vision of Friends of Topeka Zoo to operate the Topeka Zoo through a public-private partnership.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, I'm excited to have Pat Colley, Chair of the Friends of the Topeka Zoo Board, to come forward and give a presentation to the governing body regarding their vision and information regarding this proposal. So looking forward to that.
So, thank you very much for allowing us to be here tonight. I am Pat Colley, current president of Friends of the Topeka Zoo. Just want to state first off that we are extremely excited to be in front of you this evening to talk about entering into a public-private partnership with the Topeka Zoo. Want to first off, give you a little bit of background in this, to make sure that everybody is aware, kind of where this first started. So it actually goes back to when Brendan Wiley, who is here with us today, was first hired by the City of Topeka to be Director of the Topeka Zoo. At that time, we were in a position where we needed to do some rebuilding, and the Association of Zoos and Aquarium, the AZA, at that time had given the recommendation prior to him being hired, that they suggested we enter into a public-private partnership. So at the time he was hired by the city, one of his tasks was to do just that, was to move us forward with a PPP model. For various reasons, over the past years, that has started and stopped. Initially, when he was first hired, there was a number of things that we needed to get on top of, that we needed to address. And, and as we've moved along, actually since 2012, we've been engaged with a third-party consultant that we feel is actually the expert in the industry of transitioning to a PPP model, and that happens to be Zoo Advisors, and the president is David Walsh, who is actually here with us today. And he is going to help us with, with part of this presentation. So, so first off, again, we're looking to move forward with a PPP model, because we think although we're on a very good trajectory, there's a lot of positive momentum at the Topeka Zoo today, we feel that this is what's going to keep carrying us forward. This is what's going to keep getting us to that next level. And, and so that's, that's what we're excited about, and that's why we're here to definitely present to you. Just a little bit more history on the Topeka Zoo and FOTS itself. This was started in 1964, when Gary Clark, the original zoo director, was hired in 1963. He saw the need for FOTS to be present, that fundraising arm. And we have built from there. And over those years, we have developed a number of exhibits. Most recently, you all would be aware of Camp Kawabunga, which opened a few years back. For that, FOTS raised $2 million. Kay McFarland's Japanese Garden just recently opened, $5.7 million raised. And to date, the new, or the next exhibit that we just announced is Giraffe and Friends. And we've raised $4.6 million to date for that. So we're stating that to show that we have some good momentum. FOTS is doing some things behind the scenes, but we feel we can do more, and that PPP model will allow us to do that. And I might, might mention as well on the Giraffe and Friends model, that the $4.6 million, half of that has came during the time of the pandemic. So, so we are operating very well. Since Brendan was hired, and then this transition has started to turn around, and why, again, we feel now is the time to move forward, is attendance has gone from 111,000 to 224,000. So, so we are moving forward nicely. City of Topeka positions, FOTS has been able to take on some, some positions that we would not have been able to fund otherwise, if FOTS was not present, and if FOTS was not taking on the memberships, the concessions, the admissions, the marketing. We've added a number of positions totaling $124,000 annually. And, and lastly, I wanted to mention the board itself. I've been on the board since 2012, and I feel very strongly that although we've had a number of great representatives on that board over the years, we've never been stronger. We have a very, very strong, sound board, as well as Director and Brendan, to lead us to this next phase. So just real quickly, wanted to show the public and also the council, just a reminder of those projects that I mentioned. Camp Kawabunga, you know, this is an experience that was really driven by Gary Clark. He started safaris. We wanted to bring his experiences to the City of Topeka, to the public and those that could come and visit us. It houses our lions, our painted dogs, and our newest members, the patus monkeys. Very interactive, and as you can see here in the lower left, that's Shannon, our lead supervisor. It creates that, that whole education aspect that we can give to the public, that up close and personal with these new exhibits that we have brought to Topeka and that are really drawing people in. Would move on to Kay's Garden, Japanese Garden, which just opened. This is really putting us on the map. This is a destination for the City of Topeka. You know, and as this was being developed, I knew it was going to be good, we knew it was going to be good, but by the time it was finished, this was great, and this was amazing. And this is what we feel from a FOTS organization, by moving to a PPP, we can continue to build, move forward, and do more for the City of Topeka. And then here, that venue itself, actually, there's, there's the first wedding that was done here just a few months ago, and that is a City of Topeka employee, one of our very own, at the zoo, who we're very proud of. And I want to go ahead and now turn it over to David Walsh, who I mentioned earlier from Zoo Advisors, he's on the phone with us. He's going to step us through the PPP model, the reason why there's benefits to do that, and the financials that are related to it. So David, take it away.
Great. Thank you, Pat, and thank you for the opportunity to share with you tonight the overview of the public-private partnership for the Topeka Zoo. As Pat said, we have worked with the Friends of the Zoo for the last seven years in looking at this governance model. But just to give you a quick overview of our experience, we've worked with over 100 zoos and aquariums, all AZA accredited zoos and aquariums across the country, on various planning and governance projects, looking at privatization, looking at a shift in governance, as well as strategic planning, master planning. So we've, we've worked with zoos of all sizes, many right there in your region, which I'll talk a little bit about. But we wanted to provide our expertise to the zoo and to Friends to make sure that this was set up for success. So I'll start by first saying, you know, what is a public-private partnership? And what we are looking at here is a shift in operations from the City of Topeka to the Friends of the Topeka Zoo, to the nonprofit. So all animal care, maintenance, and operations would shift to, from the city to FOTS, and all would be operated under the independence, independent nonprofit, but with board representation, with, with the city having board representation. Public funding would continue, and I'll talk about that in a minute, for both operations and capital. And a key to this is, this model, this PPP model, has been vetted and evaluated over the last seven years. We've looked at this, we've run multiple models, we've tested it against our industry data and experience, to show that this is actually a very credible and feasible model, and really set up for financial success. Next slide. So the keys here are, in terms of what FOTS would be responsible for, as I said, day-to-day management operations, overall staffing, animal care, but also the AZA accreditation, as well as the USDA licensing would come under FOTS. All of the guest experience, the development of revenue programs, whether it be event rentals, membership, food and gift sales, as well as the marketing. So all of the key operational areas would be managed by FOTS. The city would retain ownership of the buildings and act as the quasi-landlord through a management and license agreement, and provide that ongoing funding for operations and capital. Next slide. So this model that we are proposing here for the zoo has been really time-tested over the last three decades. Over 75% of AZA accredited zoos are operated under this model, with a, with a nonprofit managing the operations. It has been proven to be successful in terms of growing attendance, growing revenue, and growing the fundraising support for the zoo. It also has been proven to open up other terms, other options and alternatives for alternative funding, as well as greater contributed revenue. I've identified a couple of zoos here, some, the three on the left, John Ball Zoo in Grand Rapids, Michigan, Reed Park in Tucson in South Bend, all have moved to this model within the last six years, since 2014, Reed Park being the latest to make this shift. And all have seen great success, which you see there from both attendance, new exhibits being built in all of these, and continued improvement in the overall guest experience and the economic development to the community. I've also included two that are probably more familiar with, familiar to you, Sedgwick County Zoo in Wichita, as well as the Kansas City Zoo. They have been privatized for over two decades, but both have also seen great success. Wichita has continued to grow their attendance, and they're under construction for a new entrance through private, a mix of private fundraising. And Kansas City Zoo has seen tremendous success, as you see with that 85% attendance growth. So the proven benefits here, I'm going to call out just a couple of these. The one here is this flexibility to respond to change in environments and audiences. And we think this is critical, because the zoo field and zoo profession is changing rapidly, and standards in terms of animal care and welfare, commitment to conservation, they are coming out with new standards, almost on a biannual basis, if not soon, if not quicker. So how do you have an organization that can really respond to that quickly and uphold the best care for, for the animals? The other is this positioning the zoo as this regional asset and philanthropic priority. We have seen, given our experience with other facilities that have gone through this, they become more, more successful in their fundraising efforts. People feel better giving to the nonprofit, and that's not directly tied with, into government, and they feel better, the nonprofit is a better steward of those gifts. So we have shared a model, which we have reviewed and assessed, that rolls, that looks at this plan over the next 15 years, the term of the contract. And a couple of the key aspects of it are the continued rollout of new exhibits and improvements, which we see as being critical for the longer-term success of the zoo, starting with a new giraffe exhibit in 2022, a new children's zoo in 2024, and a tiger exhibit in 2027. All of that really delivers a new economic impact for the region, both in terms of, for the construction of those projects, but also for the growth in attendance, which I'll show you here in a moment. That last bullet, we believe, is really key for you. There is less reliance as a percentage of the zoo's growing budget, declining from 50% to 40% over the life of the contract. And these next couple of slides just show that the zoo has a very well-developed master plan, that they have been looking at, that they've been implementing through these, through these added improvements, making changes, and adding really dynamic and guest-pleasing exhibits. Next slide with the giraffe. So this is the latest update of the master plan, in terms of what the current thinking is. Still under development, but as you can see, the zoo and the friends have really been looking at how do you continue to make these necessary improvements, both for the guest experience, but also to... guest experience, but also to provide the best in animal care and animal welfare for all of those animals at the zoo. And so as we look at the total attendance projection, we see ongoing growth throughout the 15-year period with these added new exhibits, growing to 280,000 visitors at its peak. 2021 is, as you can see, much lower because we are taking a COVID impact there, which we see, given the uncertainty of what could happen next year, we wanted to lower the projections, but getting back up to more normal levels with the opening of Giraffe. And this takes that previous chart, but looks at how it compares to what has been happening over the last 10 years, or going back 20 years to 2000. And over the last 10 years, the zoo has been on that solid growth trajectory, really supported by the friends with the investment in seasonal exhibits, and then more lately, the new major exhibits improvements that Pat talked about. One of the things that we look at as we make sure that those attendance numbers are viable is how do you compare to some benchmark zoos? And so we identified these benchmark zoos based on both market size, as well as overall attendance. And as you can see, in terms of what we projected Topeka at their peak, it's still not at the highest point. It gets up to 121% of market penetration, which we define as attendance divided by your metropolitan statistical audience population. And it's a good benchmark for us to see, is that attendance projection out of line? And for a community of your size, 121% is not unrealistic. Next slide. And then next, we looked at how it would compare to some of the zoos in the region. In this, when you look at that far left-hand side, that's the attendance projection at its peak. It is at the highest mark, but that's not unusual, given comparing it to a number of these other zoos, which are in much larger communities. And also, it really demonstrates the investment made. This slide shows the overall financials, which I'm happy to talk about in a bit more detail. But what it shows is this positive growth trajectory of both revenue, but keeping expenses in line, and operating at a net positive margin throughout the term, with the exception of 2021 because of that impact on COVID. So you always have that bottom-line impact, and this includes the public funding support. Next slide. And this shows, as a percent of the budget, the mil funding that would come to the zoo, as I said, declining from 50% in 2021 to 40% of total budget in 2035. So it keeps it at a, what we believe is a sustainable level throughout the contract, but makes sure the zoo is set up for financial success. And yet, just another way to look at the mil support, in terms of how the mil support will increase slightly from 1.56 mils at the start of the contract to 1.96 mils for operations, and then decline from a capital side from 0.32 mils to 0.28, going out further at the end of the contract. But as you'll note, in those later years, the last five years of the contract, it stays level at that 2 mil number. So a couple of the key considerations that are part of the management agreement. It is a 15-year contract length. This gives it the longer-term track record here of being able to maintain that sustainability for the zoo. All the current positions would transition to FOTS, so there is no loss of actual positions in this transfer to the new model. But importantly, there is a continued investment in adding new staff. As the Friends builds out those new exhibits, new staff would be added to support that additional growth, and all of which would be sustainable under this model. As I noted earlier, the city would have representation on the FOTS board. There would be two positions, as well as two ex officio positions. And also, key to this model is zoo pricing will remain accessible to the whole Topeka community. So allow access for a broad audiences to enjoy all of the improvements that are happening at the zoo. So what are some of the risks of not moving into this PPP model? As I said, it's been best practice, it's really proven to be effective, and no organizations have failed at it. But we have seen organizations that have not gone through this, not being able to make the investments in the experience, or to keep up with the latest animal care and animal welfare standards. So there is that risk of having additional USDA violations. The city has those two previous consent agreements with the USDA, which is a concern under this current model if there were a third violation. So this added investment and added support helps deal with the animal welfare standards and needs. It also is, you know, will the city be able to continue to make the investments to keep up with both the experience and those animal welfare concerns with the pressure on municipal budgets? And ultimately, you know, there is the possibility of having to reduce the collection if you cannot fund, if the city could not fund the additional staff. This model shows illustrative look at what could happen, and it shows stagnant attendance without the ability to grow those or implement those new exhibits, and the potential of a decline in net income to the zoo. Because what we have seen in other places, it becomes this spiral. You don't make the investments in the zoo. Guests don't come. You don't have the revenue then to support that added investments in the experience. And it can be a dangerous route to go without it. So this is an illustrative look at that. Next slide. So before I turn it back over to Pat, as Pat said, we have really looked at this extensively and been involved in all of the development of the models, and really have assessed this to be very credible, to be realistic. And it puts the zoo on that, or continues that zoo on the growth trajectory that they've had over the last decade. We really think the PPP model sets it up for that ongoing success. And based on our experience, it is the best direction to go. It's, as I said, best practice in the zoo profession. With that, I will turn it back over to Pat.
Thank you, David. Just a few more quick comments there. Just wanted to say, from a FOTS perspective, we do feel like we've done our due diligence very well, due diligence very well on this particular item. Again, we've been working on it since 2012, directive of Brendan when he was first hired. We've been working with David for some time. And we feel we do have the expert on how to successfully move forward with this PPP. And we do feel that it's what is needed at this time. We're now at that point, that high point, and we want to keep growing, and we want to keep getting better, and we want to make this Topeka Zoo this great asset of Topeka, a true destination for our community. So next steps, this will be the last slide that we hit. One, we're going to be looking to gain, obviously, your approval of this. That's not going to happen tonight, but we're going to have more discussions, and we want to keep working with you, give you the opportunity to ask us anything that you need to. Obviously, get that management fee in place. And then if we do get the approval, it'll be moving forward with that implementation and that transition process. And we will likely be leaning on David and his team of Zoo Advisors to help us with that, because they have the experience in doing that with a number of other zoos. So with that, any questions?
Questions or comments for the FOTS team?
Hannah's got her hand up.
Yep.
Okay, Councilwoman Nager, I didn't, okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The main concern that I have, I feel like as a destination, we have a really good trajectory. And I think you elucidated a little bit of this whenever you were talking about keeping up with the USDA and AZA standards. But as far as animal care and animal health, do you see that there is a difference between zoos that are run by government entities and zoos that are run more under that PPP?
Good question. All of the zoos that we work with are all AZA accredited. So they all follow a set of minimum standards in terms of that animal care and animal welfare. What we have seen in zoos that are operated by nonprofits that have those additional resources, they have been able to put more into some of the animal welfare, animal behavior programs that you don't see, that it's not just the care and feeding, that they are taking that next step. All AZA zoos are at the top level. It's, you know, the top 10% of animal holding facilities in the country. So I don't want to say that those others, but what we have seen is the other places are able to do it better and be able to make those added investments.
Awesome. Thank you for answering that. And that's just something that I think should be a top, and I'm sure is a top concern for FOTS going forward, making sure that not only are we investing in new experiences, but that we're reinvesting in those existing ones. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. I do, I want to start my, before I ask my questions, make it clear that I'm very supportive of this idea. And if I understand it in simple terms, it's to cut you guys loose so you can fly. And I want to do that. And with that, then, I want to make sure that, obviously, money needs to be cleared between us. Also, I want what we eventually set up to really leave you free to run. I don't want that connection, the level of connection with the city to hold you back. And so those are where my questions come from. I've sent some out in advance to city manager and to you all, and have not had replies. So I'll try and ask them in question format and see how we go. One, and we do have some experience with people at, like the Expo Center, with the county, get somebody from the city on the board, T-PAC, where we've shared a facility, and so on. So I want us to not make the mistakes we've perhaps made with those other ones, and also, or just really let you fly. So the first question would be about having a, it's kind of a lowball question, about having a representative on your board. Because on the one hand, there's a good connection. On the other hand, what we've seen is sometimes that representative, when something comes up, feels like they have a conflict of interest because they sit on the board. So could you discuss the pros and cons of that from where you, I assume this is your proposal, so where T...
Yeah.
FOTS was coming from?
I can maybe speak to that to start. You know, definitely just with the management fee, the agreement that we're trying to put in place, just trying to stay inclusive of, hey, you're turning over responsibility to us. We will have your best interest in mind. But we also want to make sure that you have a seat at the table, if you would like that. Now, we can discuss that more, if that's not something you would like to proceed with. That doesn't have to be part of the agreement. But right now, that is what we thought was most appropriate to bring to the table.
Okay. I just, I don't want to tie you down. We're also on lots of committees these days. Was the idea that it be an elected official or a staff person?
We were expecting it was somebody on the council and actually the staff as well. So there would be both representations there.
Okay, like two people or?
Two from each.
Two from each?
If you would like, yes.
Okay.
Staff would probably be the issue.
Yes.
I think the intent was the staff would be the ex officio, and that the governing body members would be the voting members. That's what I recall.
Okay.
Correct.
I mean, we haven't seen an agreement, well, I've got my old one, but I haven't seen anything, so I'm kind of shooting in the air a little bit. In terms of, maybe frame number 22 from the PowerPoint, the one that talks about the city's support? Couple of questions on that. One, it's overlaying this, you're asking us to go ahead and continue supporting the capital maintenance, not just operating support for your budget.
That's correct. There's absolutely, with the current assets that we have in place, there are capital needs that are going to be there ongoing. What is built into that model is actually much less than what is currently and has historically been in the budget for those types of expenditures going forward. And we feel, in the analysis that we've done, a lot of the model work that we've completed there, that we have it at a good level to support the continued needs of those facilities and assets that are currently at the zoo.
If I can explore that with you a little bit, does the, we're carrying a fairly significant amount of debt service for the zoo right now. Is that included in your budget, the debt service that we're carrying for the zoo right now?
Okay, answer is no.
Okay. Because looking at, I've asked for an accounting, and maybe I'll get it here shortly, but it looked like it could be as much as $600,000 a year that we're currently paying on zoo debt, based on what, I think you did give us a list of the capital projects.
Yeah, from what I've seen in the capital-type budgets that have been set by the city, they have been in that $600,000 range. When we look at the model that is here for that ongoing, it is much less than that amount.
Okay, but are you, if the debt that we're carrying right now is not included in that budget, then what you're asking for is an additional equivalent of whatever that is, $300,000 a year in debt service over and above what we're already paying?
Okay. What I would like to do on that question, let us like take that, let us take that offline, and if we could, get back to you on that. I want to make sure I don't misspeak on that question.
Well, that's why I sent it in advance, because I was trying to figure out what the total was.
I actually...
And whether it was different, or, you know, less or more than we're currently investing in the zoo, basically.
Yep.
And I couldn't get there.
I don't know what your current debt service is. I don't, I'm assuming someone at city staff knows that. I mean, those were for projects that you all did, stormwater, roof replacement at the rainforest, those types of things that have already been improvements you've already made.
Correct.
Moving forward, certainly, there's going to be additional capital expenses. And I know your concern about having an operating portion and a capital portion. And we are completely fine with you just giving us money and letting us fly, but I think the city has some limitations when it comes to how much money you have and how that money can be spent. And that's why you see the proposal you see now. That's why we have it broken into two pieces.
If I could, Mayor. The, when we look at what we have already for existing debt, those were projects that were already done prior to this. And so we look at continuing to make payments on that existing debt from previous projects that were done, not trying to lump that in. As we go forward with different projects that may be considered at this location, between the county, sales tax money that's put into the project, and how they raise money will determine how a project moves forward. But those are existing projects, and to lump that payment and expense into it will not make the model work at all. And then also, with the way they proposed it, there are, there are still capital maintenance needs that need to occur within regards to the buildings and so forth that we have at that facility. We continue to own those. And so the idea is that there should still be a contribution from the city for a portion of the maintenance of those. Because if FOTS was not who was doing that type of work for the zoo, and someone else was doing it, we still own the asset. And if we don't have an asset that is worthwhile, that would encourage someone to take an interest in being the manager of our zoo, because everything was run down, because we didn't keep up the maintenance on that asset, we want to make sure that that asset is covered. want to make sure that that asset is covered.
I see that, and I really, I'm just trying to get myself wrapped around these numbers because they're also proposing to create new asset that will require maintenance as well, and then are putting out to us that, oh, if there's not enough money, we might have to close an exhibit or something. I don't want us to be the ones that, you know, if you all want to fly, then to me, you all need to be able to make those decisions based on what the debt service would be on something, if there is any, on something you build new, as well as if that's additional maintenance because you have now more assets than you had when you started. I don't want to strangle you with the pushful of our budget, for one thing. And I'm just trying to figure out where that fits in, because when we were offered the capital budget this year at budget time, there was an estimate that there was about $625,000 a year worth of capital maintenance that the zoo expected at that time that needed to be done on the existing assets. And then there was some discussion from Brendan, this first, the first of, I think it was too many times, but I think it was the first of these fall discussions, that, well, some of those might fall off because you'd simply be tearing down a certain asset and building something new, so we would not have to do that maintenance expense. Again, you're wanting to grow the zoo, so I'm expecting that it's going to grow greater and that those maintenance demands would be even greater than what we thought. And I don't know, I guess in simple terms, what I, maybe it just can't be done that simply, but the idea of licensing or a lease to you for the ground and the buildings with some requirements that you take care of the property, take, do good customer service, performance requirements, if you will, great programming, great media, and manage the animals and the programs well, and that you're just able to just run with it. And maybe, again, I haven't seen the agreement, if that's what that is, with what was discussed before with something simple like that, and that then if somehow you fail to perform, we would plug in and say, that's, or your successors would say, that's not going very well, if it's not fixed up, we'll take it back, or something like that, but that you would be-
Let me try and answer that like this.
Okay, thank you.
With this model, the intent of FOTS in entering this agreement is, yes, there has to be a management fee, there's going to be some agreement there, whether it's mills. We showed you, you know, on those charts that essentially when you take operations and the capital needs of that, that you're really maxing out less than two and a quarter mills overall, and it flattens. We feel very confident that on the go forward, that that mill level, if that would be the agreement that we would go with, and I think there's a lot of questions on how that really funding matters, that we're going to assume that risk. So, you know, if we're able to, we're not going to come back to you and ask for more. And I think that's some of the concerns when you reference T-PAC and some of those other ref-
Yeah, I just don't-
We're not looking for that. We are looking to be self-sufficient and maintain ourselves, obviously with the management fee because we have to have that, but it's not going to be, hey, we're going to keep coming back to you, asking for more and more and more. We're going to set it up and manage it that we think is a solid way that keeps us from having to do that for you.
Well, and I'll just need some help, I guess. I wanted to see whether, what you're asking for in this frame number 22, because the debt service is something we've spent before, and I need to go back and compare, I guess, what we have supported on an annual operating basis plus the debt service, and whether this is more than that or whether it's equivalent or less. Do you have, what did you think it was?
Without giving you exact numbers, I would argue it's considerably less. I mean, if you take that, when we've been talking about the $600,000 that you had in the CIP last year, that's no longer there, that was money that was going to be spent on new, on maintenance projects for buildings that need maintenance now, and we're not even talking about the debt service. And so I think if you look at the numbers, we're saving you money in the current model, and that's not even taking into consideration what we think's going to happen to. If you keep the zoo next year, attendance is going to be less, the numbers you have in your budget for the revenue side are not there. And we've tried to, in our budget, reduce attendance and reduce those types of things, knowing that next year's going to be a rough year. So I think when we sit down, and we can sit down one-on-one and go through these numbers, I think you'll see that what we're proposing is good for the city budget both next year and into the future.
Well, as you know, that's what I want to see.
Right, right. And it's like-
And I think, two, I think additionally, Jeff White's going to talk from the city's standpoint and the work that he's done in analyzing it, once we get done with the questions here. Jeff is prepared to go through some information that he's done in order to help talk about where the city's position is on some of this.
And I know that I have, I don't mean to cut the discussion, but I know that I have two council members as well that want to make some remarks and questions. We have Councilman Duncan and also Councilman Dobler.
I would certainly yield so.
Oh, me? Oh, sorry.
Yes, sir.
I really was paying attention. Some of these are just random questions. I have no idea who wants to answer them, whether it's staff or FOTS or whoever, all right? So I'll just toss them out. I was looking at the public-private partnership model assessment, just a couple of things in there, duh-duh-duh, which I underlined, and they're here somewhere. One of the things that was commented on here is if primary market research on price elasticity and tolerance has not been conducted by the Topeka Zoo, we strongly recommend the organization considers it in upcoming years. I don't know, have you guys looked at doing that possibly, or, I mean, I don't know when you got these recommendations versus when we got this document, because it's dated now, so I wasn't sure.
Yeah, we have had, been in discussions, and zoo advisors can do that type of analysis for us. They would need to take some time to do that, but when we talked earlier about remaining an accessible zoo to the community, the model that we're proposing there is not, we're turning this in from a $6, $7, $8 entry fee to $15, $16, $17 entry fee that you see in some of the surrounding zoos. We're going to be in that same ballpark so that everybody can enjoy what we have here.
Under the venue rentals, it said, we assess this projection to be somewhat aggressive. I guess my two questions, probably for three different groups, is why do they think that is too aggressive and why do you think it's not? Right? Just curious.
Yeah. Online, no, I think this is, you're referring to zoo advisors, correct?
Yes, zoo advisors.
Make sure we know what we're talking about.
Yeah.
So maybe, David, you want to answer?
In terms of the events?
Yeah, the event, it said, we assess it to be aggressive. So obviously, you guys think it's a little aggressive, they may not think, so I'm just curious what the, maybe some of the differences there are.
Well, to be honest, we're looking at, you know, some of the uncertainty that we're dealing with right now in terms of where events could go. And so, to be honest, we always try to err on the side of being a bit more conservative as we look at our numbers. And so that's how we assess it, but we definitely see it as reasonable and attainable. We haven't had the opportunity to come out and actually be in play, you know, see the K's Garden and the facilities, but just by the pictures, you have an excellent facility out there that would seem very desirable and very rentable. So I think with the right marketing, with the right support, those numbers are attainable. It was just that kind of, that was our initial assessment of looking at that.
I just have a couple quick more ones. And the last thing on this report from zoo advisors is you make the comment that you questioned the decision to eliminate the guest experience manager position. I guess that tells me you're going to eliminate that position, just what, I mean, I know there's a lot of other positions being created, maybe there's some overlap, I don't know, but just curious.
That's not-
Correct.
Yeah, I'll take that, and then if Pat or someone else wants to. It's our, again, we're just trying to make sure that there was enough staffing to support the growth in that attendance that we're seeing over the course of the contract period. And so the thing about these projections, are they, they're just that. We want to make sure that we're putting in the right staffing but can support them with revenue. And when kind of looking at the revenue expense mix, we thought this, you know, the model definitely does work, it's just in terms of making sure you have the right people. And I, FOTS, well, the great thing is, under this model, is FOTS is going to have that flexibility of being able to put staff where they need it. So if they determine that it's better to spend on the guest services side, they can do that. It's a little harder on that when you have it under a city model.
And one more comment with that, that guest experiences position is not one that exists today. It was future planned, it very well may come back on the table, but it's not that we're reducing staff or eliminating-
Well, yeah, and I do want to point out, this model significantly expands staff, so it's not like it's reducing staff to meet any of these projections. It includes a significant staff increase. Last couple things. In regards to the debt discussion, I guess I would just ask, it would be nice not only to see sort of what the numbers, but when the payoffs are. Are they within this 15 years, are they before, is there any crossover there? And then, and I'm sure we haven't done this, and we may not be able to, to the number, it would be nice if we have, have we taken any look at any sort of cost analysis of what savings would be to the city? I mean, I know that they're probably recaptured in what we would be paying, whether it's in a dollar amount or mils, but I assume there's technically some things we're giving up that would act as an offset. So I'm going to make up a number here, but if that's a million dollars we're giving them, but we look and say, yes, but we're also quote-unquote saving half a million dollars, then it's not like a million-dollar leap that we're making. I guess that's kind of where I'm headed. So I, and I know we-
Yeah, I think we can get to some of that actually through-
Even if it's a general, yes, these are the staff we've dedicated, or cost savings in staffing, whatever that may be.
Right. Yeah, I think when we look at some of the information that Jeff White will produce, there's some items that are mentioned in that, and we can go into more in depth.
And I would comment, I know that it's hard, it's hard to quantify staff time, too, and I don't know that that can be captured, but I mean, we obviously currently have staff members, whether it's legal or HR, who won't be doing the work for the zoo anymore, and there is some value in that, whatever that may be. It's a little harder to quantify dollar-wise, but.
Right.
My last two things are mostly comments. The first is, I would support, I do think, especially if we go to a model that dedicates mills, that we, I would just, to everyone who cares, I do think we would need, would like a city council rep or two on there to sort of make sure that, you know, there's someone there watching that, not out of distrust, but for dedicating those taxpayer dollars there. The other thing is, and I've said this in some private meetings, I would really like to see a model that gives a discount to Topeka residents when they come to the zoo. That's fairly common to a lot, in fact, a lot of the zoos mentioned in this report, Sedgwick County, even when you go to the Omaha Zoo, for people who live in those cities, in some cases it's counties, depending where the money's from, but I wish we had it now, too, as I've told the zoo before. I think if we have a city-supported zoo or taxpayer-funded subsidy of some kind, then we should at least give our citizens some kind of discount when they attend that zoo with the gate fee versus everyone else from outside the city, just as a sort of offset, a thank you for that subsidy. So I would like you to take, if possible, take a look at that, and I will continue to advocate for that little, that little discount for people.
Not to necessarily respond to that last piece, but to both of your questions about representatives on the FOTS board, that came from, at least I think it was a small group meetings we had with some of you last spring, that was concerns we heard from council members that you guys wanted representation on the FOTS board. And so that's, we've been working under that impression ever since that we needed to have some sort of representation. I see both sides of it. I mean, I think it could be really beneficial to have, you all have expertise, and we want people that have expertise on the FOTS board and city staff, whether it's legal or finance or public works, certainly would bring things to our meeting that would help us, you know, take FOTS to an even higher level. But I get the fact that you guys are on lots of stuff, and you may have some conflict if, you know, we need to renegotiate the agreement in year 15 and year on there, then I see both sides of it. But I, from our opinion, you guys work that out and figure out what you're comfortable with, and we'll, I think we're good with whatever you decide on that issue.
Thank you.
Councilman Dobler?
Thank you, Mayor. I learned something from Councilman Duncan tonight, and I can have like 10 questions and just keep saying my last two. Thank you, Councilman, for that. I actually do just have two questions, or one question, one comment, I guess. Can you give us a little bit of background on the projected attendance history? I guess, I mean, I assume this only works if we get up, you know, get well over $200,000 and start approaching that $280,000 or whatever. It looks like it happens, you know, maybe five, six years down the road, we've got a 25% increase over kind of the norm, not the COVID year or whatever. So could you just talk a little bit about how those numbers were generated?
Yeah, it has a lot to do with the new exhibits that are being opened. We can even go back to Lion's Pride when it was opened a number of years ago. That was really, I think, one of our biggest peaks. I think it, we hit the, what was it?
$289,000.
$289,000 in that year. So we know we're perfectly capable of getting there, and with the analysis that zoo advisors has done as well with that market penetration testing, looking at our population as a percentage, we feel that it's very much attainable, especially with the momentum we have today and what we believe we're going to continue to do for tomorrow.
If I can just add a comment of that, you know, we have seen that level of growth in other zoos that have made that kind of experience, so it is based on looking at zoos, comparable zoos, comparable type experiences in testing that. So we feel fairly confident in then comparing it against the Topeka market size to make sure that is attainable.
One other point, if you don't mind me making, is that, you know, since COVID, I guess a good thing from COVID, what we have seen is that attendance at the zoo is actually down, but attendance revenue is up, and that you got to think, well, why is that the case? Well, we have actually more people coming from our surrounding communities that are not FOTS members, so they don't get in free, that are paying to come to our zoo post-COVID. And so we've already been talking about, instead of spending our marketing dollars right here in Topeka, or, you know, between Manhattan and Lawrence, we're going to start marketing further out because we're seeing those people coming to Topeka, which I think is an upside for, you name it, every, all the other activities in Topeka. So we think we can grow attendance outside of our close market, and so hopefully these numbers are actually under-projected, even though they do look like they're shooting up fairly quickly. If you just look at where we've been and where we think we can go, I feel really confident in those numbers.
And I'd like to make one more comment on that, why we think those numbers are very much attainable. Many of you may have heard about the new Zoo Lights experience that is coming. Typically, November through February, the zoo is not getting attendance. Those are significantly down months. We're going to have a full December, end of November, end of January period where we feel that we're going to be able to generate some significant attendance through our gates. So again, to Fred's point, we actually think potentially we can surpass those numbers.
Thank you. I guess, just a comment, clearly attainable is one thing, sustaining that is the second part of it. Clearly, if the Lion's Pride hit 285, that was attainable but not necessarily sustainable. And so I agree that some of the other things you've talked about, trying to make money in the down months with events and obviously K's Garden and things like that, I think are going to be critical to be able to sustain that. And I guess the last thing I have is just a comment. I would like to see, and I'd like this from staff, a simple pro forma that compares where we would be without this, best guess, versus where we will be with this based on the information that was presented tonight. So, you know, just a pro forma, just a line graph that says, here's what, here's what the city of Topeka is going to be spending in year 2025 if we don't do this, and that includes debt service versus what we'll be spending, what the city of Topeka will be spending in the same year if we do go with the PPP. That's all I've got. Thank you, Mayor.
Maybe a quick comment on that. In order for us to continue to grow, we know that we have to invest in the zoo, not only to maintain the current assets that we have, but to also keep that trajectory going forward. And based on the plan and moving to the PPP and the additional funds we believe that we can raise with this model, we're going to be able to do that. We're going to be able to keep investing and growing and not just attaining falling off, but continue to grow and support that for the future.
Only because I can't help not make a point, but your sustainability question, Councilman Dobler, I think that's the main, one of, for me, the main reason I want to see us do this. If you've looked at the zoo's history, we do really good things, and then all of a sudden we don't, and attendance drops, and we have animal, you know, concerns about animal care, and we lower staff, and then because it's a crisis, we, the city dumps in money, and we hire new directors, and we start heading back out. I, we've got to sustain this, and I don't think it works in a government model. I think we can continue- I think we can continue sustaining it if we have an organization focused solely on operating the zoo.
Thank you. Additional comments from team?
Another question?
Yes, Councilwoman.
Thank you. Since you were talking about the maintenance and so on, get back to the budget. I remember, and forgive me, I'm just needing to refresh on all these conversations we had before, that one of the things that I, that appealed to me when you started to talk about it was the fact that, and I'll just use replacing the rainforest roof as an example, that whereas when it's city owned, then what did we do? We waited and waited and waited, and then we finally set a budget in our CIP and we bonded it and it cost us 1.4 times as much as whatever a million dollars was or whatever it cost. And that thought that I, what I thought I was hearing from you was even something like the replacement of the rainforest roof would be something that if you were, if we did the PPP program and you were independent relatively, that you could raise the money even for big things like that, where it just kind of got stuck in our capital budget as a city, but, but the freedom that you would have for grants and fundraising could take care of even those big capital maintenance things with fundraising. Was I?
I, I think it definitely gives us some, some opportunity to do that. But I think also with the model that we put in place, looking at what is typically budgeted in those maintenance type line items for the city, that, that we feel that we can do that at a, a much lesser rate, just based on how we can, when, use those funds and build for the future. So I think it's, I think it's both parts to that.
So therefore then in, again, back to, to page 22, when you're looking at having .3 mills for capital maintenance, that, that might well be cash, that might not be borrowing like we do.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yep.
Or match money?
But I think it all, it all depends on, on the agreement that, that we end up working through with the, the city finance team. You know, it may very well not be flat mills, that would be great. But, but we, we have a lot of scenarios that I think we're still working through with the city staff on that.
Well, and I'll own the mill thing and, and to me, you were better off with a mill levy than, and, and that we were as well. And once we came to terms on what it should be, just so if times were good, you got a little extra, just like we did. And if the times were tight, we didn't get, the city didn't get caught subs, you know, with that obligation. So if you're comfortable with that, I, I still am.
On, on behalf of FOTS, if, if we could go the mill route strictly, we would be definitely happy with that.
Because the mill doesn't mean you're borrowing, even though it's capitalized. Just, thank you.
Okay, city manager?
Thank you, Mayor. We also have Jeff White, our financial advisor, who has done quite a bit of analysis on this proposal. And so we've asked Jeff to also present tonight, to provide additional information from a little bit of different perspective for you. And then I'll also make him available to answer questions as it relates to this. So Jeff, if you would please move forward with your comment.
Metamare Members of the Council, Jeff White with Columbia Capital. We serve as the city's financial advisor. I'm going to chat for just a few minutes about a framework for evaluating public private partnerships or P3s. So from the perspective of the public partner, a P3 is fundamentally about risk transfer, allocating specific components of service delivery to the partner better equipped to provide such service. When I talk about risk, you should be thinking pretty broadly. It's not just financial risk or regulatory risk, but it could be things like environmental risk, staffing risk, expertise risk, headline risk, those types of things. So the fundamental question I think for you is, within my current public service delivery model, where do I experience the most risk? What is the value of that risk or the cost of that risk? And what would I pay to transfer that risk to a third party? So to put this in pretty simple terms and to pick on something that the city doesn't operate, so I'm goring no one's ox here. If the city owned a toll road, the key risk it would maintain as a public operator is revenue risk. That is the risk that either a sudden event like COVID or a longer term event like an, an improving competing network of non-toll highways would reduce ridership and therefore revenues on the toll road over time. Toll roads might face other kinds of risk. If you live in a climate where you only have a few snowy days per year, it can be very expensive to maintain all the equipment and the staffing to fight a snow event on an infrequent basis and then keep that staffing in place throughout the remainder of the year. But before we talk about the, the risks specifically associated with this proposed zoo P3, I want to make two important comments or notes here. One is that our experience is that P3s for, including public entities, do not often provide immediate cost savings versus fully public service delivery. I, I do think that's important to keep in mind that, that, that often costs can be the same or go up early in that P3 for a variety of reasons. We'll talk about a few of those here. The other thing to keep in mind is the public partner's private counterparty in a P3 is often less financially capable or credit worthy than the government agency is. And that really kind of goes to the, the fundamental premise of, of most governments entering into these have taxing authority, high credit ratings with lots of bonding authority and their P3 partners typically don't. So turning to the, the P3 proposal from FOTS that we heard about tonight, we see their proposal being focused on the transfer of a handful of key risks from the city to FOTS. So the first one is expense risk. And I really look at this as, as more of a future risk than a current risk. And this is, the, the FOTS proposal presents the city with a predictable cost to operate the zoo going forward. Growth demand risk, folks talked a lot about tonight, and this is really where the city's revenue risk comes into play. So as you heard testimony tonight, that, that the experts in zoos, which we are not, but you fortunately have them on the, at the meeting tonight, find that, find that if we don't reinvest in zoos, that they tend to see attendance go down. And so in the general fund, we actually have, if you look at the zoo as a cost center, both a revenue line and, and an expenditure line. And even if the, even if we kept that expenditure line the same, if the revenue line drops, that, that means additional support is necessary for the general fund. And so that is a risk for the city, even if you're able to maintain costs over time. You heard a little bit about regulatory risk. Again, the zoo is regulated by the USDA and has to maintain its, its accreditation status with American Zoo and Aquarium Association, important factors there that would be transferred to FOTS. Staffing risk is one that really kind of has two components to it. One is you, you've heard a lot about the need to invest in new programs and experiences at the zoo. That often comes with requirements for new staffing support. That requirement would fall to FOTS instead of to the city. The other thing I'll note, it's been a long time since I've managed a zoo, but back in the day when I did, and I'm sure that, that Brent and the HR team faced the same thing. Zoo folks don't fit terribly well into the normal class comp structure of a large city organization. So, you know, FOTS will be able to focus on a class comp structure that, that makes sense for a zoo, that might not make sense for a fire department or a public works agency or something along those lines. And then a last note on the, on the risks that are transferred, and you might look at this kind of the inverse or a benefit, is the FOTS team also noted that zoos that have private operators tend to do better in the fundraising department. And I actually think this is a psychological thing. If, if I'm writing a check to a 501(c)(3), I may feel a little bit better about that as a donor than writing a check to a, to a government entity with taxing authority, even if I'm writing the check for the exact same purpose, which is to benefit the, the zoo. So there, there may be some fundraising boost and some psychological benefits to that. So as you would expect, anytime we're transferring risks, we're probably keeping some and maybe even creating some new ones. And we've already had conversations tonight about one of those risks that's created or maintained, which is governance risk. So today, the city council has ultimate control over the zoo, what the spending is there, what the programming is there, those kinds of things. And as council member Hiller noted, if we, to use your words, if, if we cut them loose and let them fly, that, that also means that we're, we're not going to be able to be involved in the, in the day-to-day activities. And even if there are board seats given to the city and the city chooses to accept that, likely wouldn't be controlling vote on that board. One kind of key change budgetarily that comes with P3s is today, with the zoo being part of the city's general fund, at some level, the cost to fund the zoo is a, what I would consider to be a soft obligation or a soft liability. Granted, there's a certain kind of maintenance level of spending that's required there to keep folks on the payroll and make sure the giraffes get fed, or maybe more importantly, the tigers get fed, those kinds of things. But in a tight year, this, the city has asked, and it's happened before, all departments, including the zoo, to tighten the belt, to cut spending, to defer maintenance, as was discussed earlier, those kinds of things. With a P3, however, the city would be entering into a contract with a specific dollar amount that would be due to be paid to FOTS every year. And that is a hard liability. It's kind of like debt service, if you want to think about that. It's really kind of, that is a number, it can't be changed, it's part of a contract. And even if the city's having a tough year, that number is going to be fixed. It, it can't be squished lower by virtue of its, kind of its harder nature there. But the key risk that we create in any P3 is counterparty risk. And that's the risk that our P3 partner will not, or will not be able to perform its obligations under the contract as written. So our memo, which I hopefully received in the last couple of days, contains a lengthy discussion related to assessing counterparty risk in the P3, but there's a few points that we want you to consider. First is that FOTS is a known counterparty. And I will tell you that in most of the P3s we work on, the counterparty is unknown to the, to the public agency. So there's some sort of an RFP process or competitive process where public agency says, we're looking for a P3 partner to do X, Y, or Z. Folks show up and make proposals. There's no pre-existing relationship. That P3 partner may be a joint venture between two firms that have never worked together before. And so there's not a whole lot of familiarity there. One key benefit in our mind of, of the P3 here is you know FOTS. They've been involved with the zoo, they know the zoo, you kind of know what you're getting with them and they know what you're, they're, they're getting with you. And that is likely to make this partnership stronger. On the flip side, FOTS is a small nonprofit with limited financial resources. We often talk with you when we're talking about bonds and credit ratings and those kinds of things about the importance of fund balance. And while nonprofits don't have fund balance, they do have an analog, which is unrestricted net assets. And in FOTS's case, and this is no different than most of my nonprofit clients, unrestricted net assets are modest, which means that they have a very small cushion if the financial pro forma doesn't play out as you, as you've seen on, on paper. But at the same time, FOTS also has quite a bit of flexibility. They don't have any long-term debt, which is, which is very helpful to their ability to kind of adjust over time. And we would expect that even though they're anticipating significant expense growth, particularly in the area of staffing, that they're going to moderate that additional expense growth, particularly over the next probably five or seven years, to match the level of their success in generating those new revenues. So as you're looking at that pro forma, while you're seeing attendance growth be pretty significant, and, and we think their ability to generate that is a risk, at the same time, there's also quite a bit of growth on the expense side that we think has some flexibility until that full expense base sets in here in five or seven years to allow them to adjust to the, to the needs that are going along. So as you think about the policy choice facing you, I encourage you to think about this as two separate and distinct questions. So the first one is, do you believe that the city's transfer of the risks as proposed by FOTS leave both the city and the zoo in a better net position at the end of the proposed 15-year contract term? And if the answer to that question is yes, then address the second question, which is, what is the city, what is the city willing to pay each year to gain the risk transfer it desires? So one last note, Brent, before I turn it back to you, is this, on the debt questions, so we have assumed that the, the city would keep the existing debt on the facilities as it is keeping the assets. The FOTS has not asked for an asset sale here, they're, they are asking for a license agreement. Another note I'll make is that we generally don't track debt by project. So, you know, asking for a catalog of zoo debt is a little bit like asking about a catalog of sewer line replacement. We can definitely do the archaeology into the, into the bond transcripts to find those individual projects, but we'll have to make a number of assumptions about how that individual project was or would have been amortized and those kinds of things. So that will, that will take a bit of digging to go back to answer both how much debt the city's issued for the zoo and how much term remains on that and what those annual payments might be. Brent, thanks.
City manager?
Jeff, thank you for that. You know, as we've looked at this, we have, you know, these, these serious concerns regarding really looking at how we move forward and whether or not we want to continue to look at the possibility of being able to have this other organization that's very qualified and able to run the zoo, if that's a good option for us going forward. And it's been talked about for a while. And so we're looking at this as something that should be considered. And I think we're getting closer to with regards to looking at the numbers. But really want to know from the governing body at this point, if this is something that you want us to continue to move forward with in order to be able to present an actual license agreement. Because you've looked at, and I think we've, we're really looking at the philosophical discussion with regards to how we move forward with this. And are we there to where we're still willing to consider? Have you heard anything that deters you from continuing to move forward? We put a lot of time and we still have more time to put in, in order to get to this final point. But I think for tonight, as we do this, we're really wanting to know, do we want to still continue to move forward with this? Mayor?
Councilman Lesser?
Yeah. That being said, and all the information, at this point, I'd like to make a motion to direct the city manager to begin negotiating FOTS for conditions and, and terms of a license and management agreement with the city and a private, a private public partnership. And bring that back to us so then we can start moving forward and take a look at it.
I would second that.
So we have a motion by Councilman Lesser and we have a second. My question would be, this was not an action item to the city attorney. Do we need to suspend any rule before we proceed with any motion on this?
Mayor, no, we don't, because we have done this in the past. It's merely a direction to the city manager. So it would be appropriate to go ahead and vote on that if the council would like to do that this time.
Okay, just making sure. Questions or comments from the body?
Spencer's got his finger up.
Yes, Mr. Duncan?
Question perhaps for legal, Miss May, just, just because I'm curious, I'm not really pro or con here. Is this process exempt from RFP requirements then? I mean, can we just enter into something with FOTS or?
We actually have done an RFP issuance in the past and FOTS was selected as the RFP. And that was done April, May, no, actually March or April prior to pandemic. We did an RFP solicitation in order to see before we entered into any steps with FOTS, whether there was anyone else that would potentially be interested in submitting an RFP. And we had no other application.
Thank you.
Councilman Dobler?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I agree with this direction. I think there are a number of questions that need to get answered. But rather than waiting for those questions to get answered and then starting the process of, of negotiation, that just adds a lot of time to the, to our ability to get this wrapped up. So I'm certainly supportive of this, this motion. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, and if there's no other comment, we proceed with the vote.
Mayor De La Isla.
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Yes.
Aldiva Akala.
No.
Ortiz.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Padilla.
Yes.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yes.
Duncan.
Yes.
Clock, calculator, calci score, my files.
Lesser.
Yes.
We have nine yes and one no.
Dobler.
Motion carries. I do want to take the opportunity, Brendan is in there, to let Brendan and the team of the zoo know that I am, I've been thinking with you guys, I know that you guys had a tough loss with Avis, and I know that everybody is extremely attached in the zoo to all of our fur children that we have the privilege of getting taken care of, so just wanted to let you guys know that you guys have been in my thoughts for the last few weeks. Being that we are done with pretty much most of the business, there is no public comment this evening, and we would proceed with the announcements. City clerk.
The November 17, 2020 preliminary agenda for the, there is one, pardon me, there is one presentation for the consent agenda, there is an ordinance for expenditures, as well as the minutes of the regular meeting, and action items include a resolution suspending certain governing body rules, set the public hearing date, 2020 budget amendments, third item is an ordinance with Evergy Inc. for an electric substation located on property southeast Sixth Avenue between southeast Golden and southeast Highland. Next action item is a security guard license appeal, and the non-action items include, the first is a discussion of housing study implementation plan 2021, the second is a discussion 2021 through 2025 consolidated action plan and 2021 annual plan and budget, third non-action item is discussion of non-discrimination ordinance, and the last non-action item is a discussion zoo governance license and management fee proposal.
City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two announcements tonight. The first one is, we know we need to continue to do what we can related to the mask-wearing and so forth. City Hall continues to remain open, and we do not anticipate closing city offices at this point, but we ask and remind individuals to please be wearing a mask when they come to City Hall and be respectful of the staff that will continue to provide them service. The second reminder is that City Hall offices are closed tomorrow because we'll be celebrating Veterans Day, and I will be making a Veterans Day speech tomorrow for a social club, and I'm looking forward to that. I haven't done it in a few years, so looking forward to it. That's all I have. Mayor?
Thank you very much. I'll be rather quick, just a little reminder, we have been seeing the highest numbers of COVID that this county has seen. Our country exceeded the 10 million mark, and the death toll continues to increase. I think that one of the things that I have been trying to do, albeit uncomfortable, which is running a meeting from home and not being able to be next to my partners and the team of the council, has been doing this because it's the way that I could at least model to everybody that this is real and that there are ways that we are able to, that are safe. We will have a press conference probably on Thursday. I think that we released that information from the county. It's going to be a Zoom press conference that is coming up. There is no foreseen changes being looked upon or health ordinances right now. I had the pleasure of speaking with Commissioner Mays earlier today, and we are concerned. Our hospitals are seeing high numbers of individuals that are sick, our community continues to increase, and this is the second week that we're seeing an exponential growth of cases. This was never supposed to get here in our community the way that it is right now, in the sense that we were wanting to ensure that our hospital capacity was not overextended. And although we may not have so many cases from Shawnee County in our hospitals, I want to remind everybody that our hospitals happen to be regional centers for care. Just wanted to make sure that I reminded all of us of the value of kindness, of being able to wear a mask. It is extremely important. I know that people may think that the masks don't help, but I tell you that the mask, even in the most recent Johns Hopkins study, shows that if you wear a mask and you are in contact with somebody that did not have a mask, your likelihood of having a severe incidence of the virus is much lesser. So just remember that as we approach the next few weeks. We've seen some senior centers that have had some outbreaks, and that is always concerning to us in our community. And just in the first few days of the month, I think that we've had more cases than we saw last month. So let's be vigilant, let's be kind. I know this is uncomfortable, but remember that we have a way to take care of each other. With that, Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll keep it brief as well. The schools will likely be back to full remote on Monday, and that's concerning as well. So we need to make sure that we teach our kids how to wash their hands, wear their mask, and also change their mask. You know, I've talked to some children that they've worn it all week, and that's not good, parents. We need to do better, as well as adults. So if you can't do it for yourself, do it for somebody else. Also, I want to thank all my constituents who've been sending me cute little masks. I probably want to thank them for thinking of me and sending those to me. Also, I want to say, smoke detectors work. If you look at that fire, again, we were blessed. I know it's November, but I got two weeks in November, so, you know, let's still talk about smoke detectors because that fire is just crunching. And I remember when that happened, the firefighter, he says, I don't feel like a hero, I'm just doing my job. That's a heck of a job, and if we can give them an extra tool that's free to the city, let's do that to our council members. I say that. I also want to thank Mike Padilla for taking on the census task. Job well done, Mike, and you know, behind you is a good wife, and she was on that battlefield too. She wasn't mentioned, but I wasn't going to go home tonight without mentioning her. I wanted to have a meeting, and Mike said, what? I got my census meeting, we can't do that. So we moved it back for him. He was dedicated, and it really showed at the end. And last but not least, I want to say happy Veterans Day to all the veterans. Thank you for what you've done, thank you for what you're doing. If you see one, well, we can't shake hands, but you can give them a kind word, just tell them thank you, and thank you for serving. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Three, hopefully, quick things. First of all, to echo what Councilmember Ortiz already said, I'd like to thank our veterans, in particular, our city manager Trout and Councilman Padilla. You know, the freedoms that we enjoy and often, I think, take for granted in this country was paid for by the blood of our servicemen and women, so I really appreciate your sacrifice. Thank you both you gentlemen for serving. Secondly, we had a thing happen a couple of weeks ago, it was an election, and while I know the outcome wasn't what the mayor was hoping, you ran a very classy campaign, Mayor, I loved your commercials you had, so I really thank you for running a positive Lastly, I had some, oh, last night, and this is going to be Mike Padilla night on the council, but last night, we had a, it was kind of a miniature crime summit sponsored by the Central Highland Park NIA, a great thing that they actually put together, and we had several representatives of our police department there, but we also had councilmembers, Padilla and Hiller came over to that, and, you know, they each have a lot of NIA's in their areas, so I know they have a lot of nights where they're going to those already, so I really appreciate them taking the time out of their schedules to come over. The city manager also came and shared some great comments, so thank you, all three of you, for that, really appreciate it. Thanks.
Deputy Mayor, it's always my Padilla night. Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank Councilwoman Ortiz for trying to save me and mentioning my wife as my support and that she has my back in just everything that I do. So thank you, Sylvia, I appreciate that. Keep me out of trouble that way. I have to say that I want to follow up with Councilman Emerson's comments about the mayor. I think a lot of people experienced, I want to say, political fatigue, as it were, listening to all the commercials and that we sat through for a very long campaign period, but the standard that our mayor set in speaking to the public is something I think we all should recognize and keep in mind when our campaigns come up. I think everybody sitting on this council right now has done that in the past, been very positive, talked about how they can help and what they can do rather than pointing fingers, and I appreciate that, Mayor. I think you are continuing to be a strong representative, an example for our community, so I thank you for that. And to keep myself out of trouble, again, I have to mention, today is my grandson Luke Elliott's 12th birthday, so I want to say happy birthday to Luke. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Padilla, and happy birthday, Luke. Councilwoman Nager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just on the same note as wearing masks and making sure that those are fresh and clean, if you do have any questions about any part of this, make sure that you're reaching match professionals. I know that in my line of work, I'm seeing a lot more crunching and grinding because people are a little bit more stressed out right now, and people are getting information that it's being caused by masks, and that's somebody who had been wearing a mask every day before, and he was a terrible grinder, the two things are not related. So just because there is information out there, make sure that you are chatting in with those who are experts in their field and getting the help that you need. The only other thing I wanted to say is, I wanted to thank our active service members and our veterans, that it's a courageous thing that you do, and I also want to thank their families because that's also a huge sacrifice. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilman Dobler.
Thank you, Mayor. I would also like to thank the veterans, particularly in District 7, but all across the city. Special note to the city manager, Chief Cochran, Mike Padilla, I know we've got a lot of folks in the city of Topeka that have served, and we all appreciate that. I know it's been mentioned before, but one more time for Mike Padilla and the effort he put into the census. I don't know where you find the time, Mike, but again, appreciate it very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Duncan.
I will point out, Councilman Padilla, that I actually wore my shirt and posted it on Facebook and social media and promoted your efforts, so I listened and I did what I was asked to do, and I think it paid off. I think we would have hit those numbers had we actually been able to complete the timeline of the census, so those things just got us. I'll echo everyone else's comments, I think we have, what, 118 or so city employees who are veterans, so to all of them, take a few minutes tomorrow to remember all the veterans who served. I let my family down that I did not serve, but I come actually from a long line of family members who did, so I always remember them on Veterans Day and appreciate what they did for our country. I mean, I'll echo everything people have said about COVID. I'll be not quite as nice in some respects, I'm losing my patience a little bit for folks who think it's over. It's tough, I know. I was driving down the street the other day, and restaurants were packed, and I get it, I understand why you want to be in that room, but we talk a lot about masks, and masks have become the polarizing discussion to have, but the reality is masks are a very small, large and necessary, but only one component of a series of steps that include staying the heck away from large groups of other people, which, you know, do include mass gatherings. My family has made the decision that we will not all be getting together this Thanksgiving. As I sit here tonight, I have three close family members who are home, not in my household, but who have COVID, and two of them, it's been tough going. Two weeks ago, a close member or a close friend of our family passed away, no underlying conditions, don't send me that tweet, I don't need it anymore, from COVID. If you had asked us that many of this six, seven months ago, the question was, do you even know anyone with COVID? And we are now reaching a point where not only do most of us know someone, but now people are dying. And so I'm not asking people to take too far of an extreme if they think that that's going too far, but I am asking people to continue to be vigilant and just do the very basic, simple things so we can get through this, especially as we head into the holidays. So with that, I am done. Thank you.
Councilman Lesser.
Just two things. First of all, I can't tell if Bill Fyander's still on here or not, but I just wanted to thank Bill and Brent for taking care of an issue for our business in District 9, that we had an issue with some sign issues that they took care of and worked through with the owner, and it looks like we're good to go. So I want to thank both you guys for doing that. Yeah, the only other thing I have is happy Veterans Day, and there again, to all our veterans, thank you. It's, you know, right now, what we're going through as a country as after this election, you know, the negative is obviously what we're kind of having to deal with, and I think my stress level, every time, thank God the commercials are over, it drove me frickin' crazy, and, you know, I also did learn something, you know, I did learn something. I mean, I always knew, don't always believe what you hear, but, you know, one particular, you know, I shouldn't, you know, I'm a Republican, but I'm going to sit here and say this, you know, I'm sitting back here seeing this commercial about our mayor that is just flat-out BS, and it really bugged me, you know, I'll be right honest with you, you know, it wasn't true. So it makes you start second guessing how much of that stuff out there, you know, just be nice, be nicer, you know? Tobias, my wife and I, Tobias lost his race, but man, you know, we watched his ad, and he basically just talked about himself and what he does, and how nice, you know, what he wanted to do, and didn't go after his person or his opponent, and yeah, so anyway, I'm getting way off track, but, you know, it's been a long week. So thank you to our veterans for giving us the opportunity that we have these problems, we have these issues, because without your sacrifice, we wouldn't live in this great country that we do and have to deal with these problems that we have to deal with sometime, so thank you.
Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. Pick up on really the comments.
Pick up on really the comments from my colleagues. I too found the campaigns shocking in many ways, unbelievable, and it was a reminder to me of getting elected here on the council in 2009, when this council had gotten kind of acrimonious and so on. And what I remember then was that we, as elected officials, need to own that change to some extent, and I'm really proud of serving on this council because we, each of us and together, in my opinion, do our very best to represent our districts and our city and to work with one another and with citizens the way it should happen. And we had record voting this time, which I'm so thrilled about, but as I've run and worked with citizens, fundamentally what I found out was that people don't want to vote for the wrong person. And so, again, being solid and being able to keep our government, something people are proud of, to try and then head off the kind of stuff that happened with some of those campaigns. No wonder people don't have confidence, and they're worried. And so, again, proud of what we've worked on here, and we need to keep it up so that the new voters especially continue to be confident that it's worth it to vote and participate. Shout out to the mayor once again. Way to go. Strong, classy, good example, and proud of you. Proud that you're our mayor as well. Veterans Day is coming up, and we need to remember those veterans are old, older, they're younger. We have recent veterans that have come back, some of them in combat, in terrible situations which they struggle with. Many of those veterans are people that are well-known in the city. Many are our neighbors, our friends, our family members, and I'm always reminded that a substantial number of our homeless folks are veterans. And so it's hats off to all of them this Veterans Day. And thanks again, Mike, for the census. And now that we've said thank you and everything, I did give out some wristbands. People thought they were pretty cool, and I will go home and take my sign down finally. And that's it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a little bit about Veterans Day. I retired from the VA, and I dealt directly with veterans and benefits and healthcare from combat veterans to Vietnam veterans to a small sliver of what's remaining of our World War II veterans. I think we need to, you know, understand that there is a great vulnerability in hurting that exists, mental health issues with a number of our veterans, and that must remain something that is spoken about vocally, that there is no shame in that. What there should be shame in is that there are not enough dollars that are coming to help those veterans in need. So blessings to all that have served. Additionally, with COVID, I would just say, please, you know, we are a Christian nation, and so the way I was taught with Christianity is you take care of each other, and you love one another, and you protect one another. And I'm, like Spencer, there are more and more folks that I'm knowing that are having COVID, and it is a great concern to where our family will not be celebrating together either. So I just want to say, just take care of each other. Elders, I can't imagine how hard this is. Call each other, Zoom each other, send cards to each other, but this is really going to be a difficult two months ahead with what we're looking at, you know, case-wise and with the flu. So be there for each other. And also, I just want to give a big, huge shout out to Monique of Ladee and Latoya with what used to be DNR and their operation Food Secure. I went out a couple of days to help, and it is an amazing effort that they and a number of folks have put forward to help feed those that need food in our community, and they are doing a wonderful job. They went above and beyond working 12 or more hours a day. So kudos to them. And since we're shouting out birthdays, I want to say to Maria Patricia Ramirez Valdivia, my mother, happy 84th birthday. Thank you, Mayor.
Happy birthday to your mom. All right, so at this point in time, we do have an executive session. If the clerk, the city attorney, would give us the parameters.
The motion is to recess into executive session for a period of time not to exceed 45 minutes to discuss confidential employment matters pertaining to non-elected personnel as justified by KSA 75-4319B1 in order to protect the privacy of those discussed. To aid in the discussion, the following individuals should be present: Members of the governing body and City Manager Brent Trout. No action will be taken when the open meeting resumes in the governing body chambers.
What is the pleasure of the body?
So moved after 10-minute break?
Absolutely. We have a motion by Councilwoman Hiller, a second by Councilman Lesser. At this point in time, if there's no comments or questions, we proceed with a vote to enter into an executive session.
Mayor De La Isla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Alcala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
Yes.
That's 10 yes.
10 having voted yes, we will recess for 10 minutes and then engage in our executive session. We will allow some time for the room to be cleared and for the Zoom meeting not to be broadcasted. Thank you. We are back. We're back. We're back? Yep. All right. So the executive session has concluded. No action has been taken at this point in time. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all. Good evening.